We need to call to order South Hampton Town Planning on Thursday, October 14, 2025. The Secretary will call the roll.
Jay Lefaro is absent. Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Mootu is absent. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any minutes?
Seven twenty-four.
Seven twenty-four?
Yep.
Very good. We have motion. Motion by Kate, second by Tom, all in favor. I oppose the extensions. We have five, two absent. We're going to close the afternoon regular session, convene the afternoon work session. Claire, are we ready to go with your items? We'll do Stephen Perron. Item one on the work session.
Yeah, invite them up.
Sure, come on up.
I'll do a little background on this one.
Smitty, how are you?
Hi, this is, I'm Joan McGivern from Toomey Latham.
Basically, it's out here.
Come up to the table, that's fine. We have mics now. Thank you. Only got them.
I'm going to pass out the pre-submission report, just so you have it as a reference. Do you mind if I do like a little background and then it's probably easier?
Bring us up to speed.
It's always easier.
But these are the plans that they're proposing. So just as reference, some background is that this was a pre-app report that was adopted in 2022. You have updated it. It's valid until, I think, the end of the month, I think, right? And the original proposal was to do a couple buffers on the property. And off the top of my head, I think it was a hundred in the rear?
A hundred on both of them, they wanted, and fifty foot across.
Fifty on the rear and then a hundred along the east property line. And that was to protect the vegetation and to protect, you said, these kettle hole depressions on the property, yeah. So this is their proposal. They can talk to you about modifying the pre-app and probably more time. How are you doing with the health department?
We are almost done with that.
Okay.
It's been, there were two sep- two separate septic systems on the house. Health department only had record of one. We had to expose the other one.
Just identify yourself.
Record.
Yeah.
Just identify yourself with the record.
Oh, Bob Smith, Squires and Holden. Forty-six Jagger Lane, Southampton. That's just so the guys know who to write the tickets to. This original application was done back in eighty-six and approved by the planning board, but never went to the health department. Property got sold, new owner, different configuration. And the first thing out of the box was a hundred foot down the east property line buffer. These are two kettle holes in Shinnecock Hills that have never seen a drop of water in the bottom of them. I mean, this is sand. Anything that falls in the ground penetrates the ground. What Mr. Perron would like to do is cut that buffer down to say fifty feet because we're not putting any water in here. And we realize you want to protect the vegetation. We can't build along that side anyhow because of the slope. So, I mean, to reduce that buffer to fifty feet would be, you know, a huge advantage for him. In the back, they asked for a fifty-foot buffer for Loco or PSENG. But PSENG has never driven on this property. I have a copy of an aerial photo that shows there is a dirt road that they use that runs outside of his fence. His fence runs right along that yellow line on this drawing.
Do you hold that up, Chris? We can't, I can't see it.
Pass it around for them?
I mean, I realize there might have to be some easement closer to the tower, the service of the tower. But if you notice the yellow highlight, that is the fence, he has a plastic fence that's been there for twenty years. It runs, they've never been on the property. There's no easement on the property to the east. There's no easement on the property to the west. So Mr. Perron is proposing that we put some sort of an easement around the tower because they have access without traveling on his property.
So they get in from South Valley.
Yeah, they come in from South Valley. You can see right on the, they come up South Valley and they make the turn and it's off his property where they make the turn.
So you don't need an easement buffer back there?
Well, I don't see, I mean, the fence has been there for twenty years, you know, and the Loco's outside the fence.
Actually, they have the ability to go in and clear, and they typically do, right? Go in and clear those areas anyway.
Well, they, because they have the road outside, they use that. They utilize that.
But they have the right to go in.
Questionable in the argument. They have, you know.
Well, I'm saying.
They've always, they've always felt that they had a sixty-six-foot right-of-way through Shinnecock Hills.
Yeah.
But the only right-of-way of record is a one-foot right-of-way given to them by parish. They were erected holes.
Right.
Not towers.
And the properties on either side don't have the easement.
Okay. Could we have your name for the record, please?
Joan McGivern from Toomey Latham.
Okay. So Claire, what about the trail?
Oh, yes, the trail would be something we'd want. So what are you showing now?
The last go-around, there was, they were going to move the trail along Canoe Place Road because it doesn't serve a purpose to go up to the railroad tracks. And the current plan from, what I understand from Marty, is it comes up South Valley Road and then we're supposed to giving them five feet or showing a five-foot easement in Canoe Place Road, which is a trustees' road, so they can walk along there. If you recall, the original plan for this Panama Trail was to walk across the railroad bridge. And the railroad didn't think that was a good idea.
Okay, they're saying.
So now they've adjusted their plan to come down to Montauk Highway and walk over there.
Yeah, Trails Advisory is suggesting, like you said, the Canoe Place Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the southern border of the lot, yeah. Okay.
Claire, you, we reduce this to fifty feet and leave us enough room in here to put your trail.
The, I know there's been an effort, and I think Mike Lieberman is now working with an organization that was working on a bike trail, you know, from the city all the way to Montauk.
Okay.
I don't know what the latest status of that is. And I remember years ago, you know, when I was here, there was often discussion about putting something adjacent to the tracks or under the LIPA power line. You haven't heard anything current?
No, but that was the discussion. Yeah, right.
And there was, there was a lot of gray area with regard to the easement and the right-of-way.
Theoretically, then we'd make a fifteen-foot bike trail on the north property line. I mean, is that, is that what you're angling it?
I just would hate to sit here today and.
I think that would be plenty.
I think all these things are part of the sky for the future.
Right.
And I understand that. And, you know, you have an opportunity to gain some sort of an access. I don't think Mr. Perron would fight it with the fifteen-foot strip there. And then we'll make another cutout for the tower, for Loco.
Yeah, I don't think we need anything for the tower. I mean, the only, it doesn't make sense to have a conservation easement there because LIPA typically goes in and
That's what they want.
They clear, they clear cut. So you'd be, they'd be creating conflict. So that certainly doesn't make sense.
And this is separate.
Sure, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so this is the LIPA PSEG. This is separate from the right-of-way that the railroad has.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's to the, I guess, north.
Railroad line goes to our north property line.
Right, which I think is also, you mentioned sixty-six feet and I remember.
Usually that's what the railroad lines are.
I was gonna say, that's what I was thinking.
They now are down to thirty-three in some places, but it's.
I mean, the only thing that comes, it's too separate.
Sixteen and a half, thirty-three, forty-nine and a half, sixty-six. That's where that came from. Okay, thank you.
The only big issue in this area, I don't know if it's been mentioned, is the very activity for the Shinnecock, this is the Fort, Shinnecock Fort area.
Oh, we've done, we've done, we've done an archaeological study.
You have done, okay. Yeah, good. Good. Okay, so.
So the big question now is how big to make these radiuses around the kettle hole?
I mean, radius is kind of hard to, hard to do, right?
Well, look.
I think more of like a straight line.
Yeah.
Then you're taking all this land in here that doesn't affect it.
I think it's also for, for the vegetation. I'm not quite sure. Do you have the?
There's no vegeta- there's no vegetation on this. There's no vegetation on this property.
Anthony, can you zoom in to the aerial?
On, it's right on the survey. There's a, there's a line of vegetation in the back, Lot One, Lot Two. Comes down off the railroad tracks and goes around. That's all cleared. And then around the house is all cleared. But the rest of it is not.
Oh, yeah, with the trees down, huh?
A lot of, a lot of that was the pine beetles killed all the pine trees.
Oh, yeah.
And they just cleared them. They just cut them down.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we did show the clearing. And I seriously think, you know, a radius works much better because you're trying to protect the whole. You're not trying to protect the whole length of the property.
But how do you segment that, identify it? When it's a straight line, you could put a fence up?
You put a fence around it, around the radius. I mean, you.
That's true. I mean.
I mean, we stake, think of the wetlands. We stake buffers to the wetlands that go
Small fast.
Up, down, round.
Think of like a split rail?
Split rail. Might be easier just to, if we're gonna do, typically do a split rail fence up to delineate these areas so people, so might be better to square it off somehow.
Like a hexagon or something.
Yeah. Yeah, the Conservation Board comments mention the two kettle holes, but also mentions the steep slopes as part of the intent for the conservation easement. So, you know, looking at that, you know, maybe we could work with you to get a little more out of this, but not have it preserve some of the slopes as well.
Steeper slopes are next to the house. That's a problem.
In terms of a straight line, if you just fifty feet, straight up, you would lose, I mean, this is a saddle here. This is a high point for that, you know. Protect it if you want. We can make these rectangles, you know, instead of circles, fifty feet like that. And you order them with a split rail fence. Of course, that doesn't stop this guy coming in. He hasn't got a split rail fence, but.
Yeah, at least it's something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then you know where it's, where the clearing would be and things like that if you have a point of reference. It's okay.
Good with fifty. And then we'll take out the conservation on the north on the railroad tracks, yeah.
Thank you.
You're gonna, we're talking about fifteen-foot, fifteen-foot, what do we do, an easement there or?
Uh.
Do a feet dedication? Is there park feet?
You could do, obviously you could do a conditional, obviously. That would be fine. Or you could do an easement, either one.
What's your pleasure, Bob? Want an easement or would you want a, like a conditional offer if the trail ever gets?
I think a conditional offer would probably be a better solution.
Okay, yeah, that way.
If it never comes to fruition.
Yeah, it just sits out there, exactly.
Then you'd, we'd probably still do the trail.
Still do this trail down here.
Yeah, yeah, or whatever the trail survives, we're saying. So, okay.
They can walk here and they can ride their bikes up there and.
Do you want to mark it up and then we'll do it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Do you need more ti- obviously you'll need more time for the health department, six more months?
Probably.
Extend the, extend the pre-app to six months?
Then I'll have it all written up for the next meeting.
We have motion for that? Motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose the extensions. We have five yes. Oh, wait a minute. We're in work session. We'll send it as soon as we get a regular session.
No, we can, what we can do is I'll just do everything, including the extension for the next meeting.
Okay.
That way we have a map, you guys, bless it.
Iron out all the issues.
And the report will be updated to reflect what we discussed today.
Great.
Great, good. Thank you.
Robert, as always.
This is a boxer on both sides.
Yep, yep. You can just send it to me and then I could tell it looks good. And then we'll go from there. Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, are you gonna jump in on Hampton Bay? It's a covenant amendment.
It's not mine. Somebody else is, though. I don't take anybody's notes. I get here and not have their cheat sheets.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Just tell us your name, please.
I'm Effie Neofidos. My husband and I, Effie Neofidos.
Effie Neofidos, welcome.
All right, let me just explain all the, I'll show you here, Dennis and everyone in the board. Back in nineteen ninety-five, a two-lot subdivision was done. So it was just the two lots. It was this piece here, this piece here, nothing else going on in the area. But at the time, this piece, they put a forty-foot buffer on Lynn Avenue, and it was wooded at one point. This lady purchased the property at some point, thought that there was a buffer on there, wanted to get a permit to put a fence back there. And the building department came back and said, there's a buffer. And she came to me, talked about buffer and looking at it, you know, she wanted to sit before the planning board to see if they were eliminating the buffer in this case. Very different from a lot of other subdivisions. We're a big subdivision. We were treating buffers.
Yeah.
This was sort of done, you know, my opinion about this one is, this property's burdened, and I get, they did a subdivision in nineties, but the property's burdened with two front yards.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, and it's very oddly shaped. So once permits were issued, obviously people started using the back here for the yard. Not a lot of natural vegetation, a lot of lawn in this area. I don't know if people kept up. Sorry.
My voice isn't loud enough? Unheard of. And so she was requesting, so before I had her submit, you know, the big fee and actual legal documents, I just wanted to present it to the planning board in this case.
I mean, that does make a lot of sense to.
This was one where I looked and I was like, ah, you know, there's not a lot of room on this property to do anything. And actually, she had agreed that the trees that are still in there on the, on Lynn, she was gonna keep up, actually, not take them down. So.
Could we reduce it versus eliminating it?
That's an option.
I mean, Lynn Avenue was such a scenic drive. There it is close to the water. So, you know, there is value in keeping some of those trees and keeping that buffer free to.
So I have no intention of removing any trees. So since my husband and I purchased the property in the end of twenty. So in the summer of twenty-two, we put a pool in our backyard. And at that time is when we found out that we had two front yards. We didn't know that until the pool company went to do the pool permits and it had, they were told that we needed a fifty-foot setback, which we really didn't. We only needed, no, we were told we needed a sixty-foot setback, which we didn't. We only needed the fifty-foot setback, which was the buffer. So there were trees, when we bought the property, and one of the reasons I guess we didn't know about the two front yards was, there was an opening on Lynn Avenue, and it was being used as an active driveway. There was an RV on the property at the time. There was a boat. There was a doorbell. So we found out more about the property during the pool permit process. So as Anthony said, it's an irregular, it's a sloping property. The only flat areas on the property are around the pool, the hardscape, and the buffer. That's it. Everything else on the property is sloping. The neighboring property that was the subdivision that was done in the nineties is much larger. I think, I believe it's double the size of my property and the shape is different. So I'm not quite sure why the buffer was put on my side and not on that side. I have two other neighbors on the side. They're both corner houses. One of them does have a fence on Lynn Avenue. The home next door, the larger home, has two active driveways, one on Lynn and one on Bay. And since I finished my pool in the buffer, I filled in the spots. I closed off that driveway that was there. And I planted more, there were green giants there. Sorry, I planted twenty-two green giants in the buffer. And then I planted an additional sixty-eight trees on the other side of the fence. So right now, my fence, my pool fence is running along the buffer. And it's at a very unusual angle because of the way the property is angled. You can see the, the fence is all along that buffer. And it comes like right up to the hardscape. And we had to put two retaining walls up to build the pool.
So if we were to reduce the buffer?
I'm sorry?
If we were to agree to reduce the buffer, it would be the pool side. You want it moved away from the pool?
I want it moved away to the pool. So I'd like to put the fence on my side of the yard so it wouldn't be visible from the street. But I'd like to take it down to that, I have two different rows of green giants. I like to take it down to the row that's by the street and, but on my side, so it wouldn't be visible from the street. And that way I can have a, a flat area for my kids and my family to play in back there. I like to fence it in and on all sides. It, right now, we have soaker hoses running around the green giants, but we really can't maintain that area and have a sprinkler system there because of the covenant. So ultimately, I'd like to reduce, I'd like to eliminate the buffer.
Yeah, there's no vegetation.
It's, it doesn't really serve any purpose for the, you know, for the neighborhood. And it really hinders our property.
So it's a buffer, but it's not really a vegetated buffer. It's.
It's like there's some.
But actually, if you want to plant something.
It's established along the roadside, roadside, right?
You can go ahead and plant in there.
They could even be within the right-of-way for all I know. It's hard to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go and plant in there if you want, but there's nothing to protect, preserve.
No, there's nothing to protect and preserve.
You know, one time there was. No, it's not.
No, in fact, if you look, it was a weirdly written, it even says, you know, restricted, only thing that could happen is the planting of trees. It was just a weirdly written buffer altogether. So this was one where I felt I could come to the board with and, you know.
You need a public hearing on this?
No, there was no public hearing. And I try, and I know that, you know, the planning board had that discussion. And I get it, by the way. This, if this was a subdivision with fifty lots in there and everybody had buffers.
Right.
We're talking about one, yeah, we would have to. This one, I'm really sort of comfortable with this, to be quite honest. And, you know, I was gonna have her then submit, you know, the fee and the proper pay.
Proper, okay. So I think you're hearing support just eliminates buffer.
Are there street trees there that would be maintained then? I'm just wondering if we keep a ten-foot or something, then you still have a lot more.
So I maintain the street trees because, and I have soaker hoses, I replanted, I put soaker hoses around them because there's so much noise on Lynn Avenue and we had no privacy. So that's why I then also added a second row of green giants. So I have no intention of eliminating anything because I've planted almost everything there right now.
That's giving you privacy to your pool.
Yeah.
Privacy to the pool. It's cut down on the noise.
You'll just move them back towards Lynn Avenue, right?
I'm not gonna touch any of what's on Lynn Avenue. I want to put the fence, move my fence on my side. And then I will do like another row of green giants to try to eliminate more of the noise. It's very noisy. We have the motorcycles that go down towards Montauk and it's, it's a noisy street.
Yeah, they got it on Lynn Avenue.
Yeah, I mean, so my point is Hampton Bay's has really very limited clearing restrictions. So it's, you know, I understand what your intent is, right? But the planning process travels with the property. And so to get you what you need on your property, but also kind of like maintain that piece is an important aspect of community character and especially along that roadside. So I'm wondering if, you know, forty feet down to, you know, ten feet, or if we cut it in half to twenty, what gives you enough room? I think that would be a good thing when you're gonna be submitting your application to show on the survey, you know, oh, we'd like to cut the buffer area in half. And that would give us enough room. And then, you know, we can consider that, but also maintain a portion of that conservation.
But right now, it's a non-disturbance buffer. It's been fully disturbed. Theoretically, you wouldn't be able to plant if we had a buffer there.
Right, which doesn't matter because nature returns itself.
But make sure the half that is there is vegetated, you know, has trees and is maintained.
Right, yeah. So you're gonna come back in with your application. And that would be my suggestion is to see what amount of room that you need and reduce the buffer versus eliminating it entirely. Because the, again, the planning process travels with the property, not what your intent is. And over time, that matters, those little decisions.
Can your survey show us what's planted when you bring the application? So we can look and see.
It, it does not show what's planted. I can take pictures of what.
No, I, I know what they're asking for. You'll, you'll come and talk to me and I'll direct you.
Anthony, what's the size of the buffer now?
It's forty feet. It, what you're looking at, it's, it's this area right back here.
So to give her maximum flexibility and still provide a buffer, can we go to ten feet? Is that sufficient?
Maybe. Let's, let's see what the survey, if we're gonna get a survey and see where the, the tree line is. If it's sitting in the town's right-of-way, then, you know, then it's sitting in the right-of-way.
As long as we know that what buffer remains is going to have trees and bushes and whatever.
Which I think that helps. But what we're talking about, and it also provides you with more space to use, but also a buffer for your privacy and noise production.
Which is there now. I mean, I, like I said, I've increased it and it's there and I absolutely need that. It's not even a question of ever being able to clear that. It wouldn't make any sense for privacy and noise.
Yeah.
It's, you know, my goal is to plant more there. And also to be able to plant more on the side because I'm getting a lot of noise coming over, off of that neighboring driveway when the motorcycles go out. And there's not enough of a buffer on the side. So if I move my fence, I'm gonna have more opportunity to landscape that, you see like that dark corner there?
Yeah.
That really needs to be landscaped heavily there. And it'll also allow me to move, I had put a gate into the buffer, it'll allow me to move the gate to a better place to have access to the buffer.
You have to amend the covenant to allow you to do that because you're typically, non-disturbance buffers are non-disturbance. You can't plant in there. So we want to allow you to plant. So show us what's planted in there and then we can, you know.
Yeah, once we have an application in front of us, I think that, that would be my guidance, is that you show the existing and then the proposed based on the guidance that's being provided. And, you know, for me, that you've seen at Argon Road East and Canoe Place, you wouldn't think that they would have ever removed all those trees for privacy, but it was completely clear-cut. And so, you know, maintaining what is still viable of, of non-disturbance buffers, conservation easements, especially in Hampton Bay, I think is very important. Thanks for being able to hear it.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for letting me present to you.
Thanks for coming in. We're gonna close the afternoon work session, convene the afternoon regular session. We did the pledge, we did the attendance, we did minutes. And Anthony, did you want to keep going? We're now in regular session with Hampton Cove Estates. Is that still on?
There's a, just a report and a resolution. You have a copy, Kevin?
I do, thank you.
So everybody's familiar with the site. This is at the corner of Fanning and Canoe Place.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was the eight, you know, eight motel units.
Yeah.
They were, if this happened in the eighties, converted to the apartment units.
They never.
Everything's over six hundred square feet. The property actually is in very good shape here. Looks nice. It's properly hedged. It's even hedged on the side here and the parking, you know, sort of just.
Can we just get your name for the record?
One where last time, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could we just get your name for the record?
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal.
Just had a question where we left off last time. We were asking whether the Suffolk County Health Department needed to approve an upgraded septic. Is that, am I recalling correctly?
The septic is being upgraded. So what happened was, we held the hearing, everything was closed, everything was done. The issue of septic popped up. So we wind up redeeming the application and complete. They came in with a plan with the septic update. I re-refered it to the fire marshal and to the engineer. And everything was, was good. If you go to the report here, which is the first one, it's a special exception. Do you go, just go to page two. It's a special exception used in the town code. It's a secret. This is a type-one action. And we did a NECDAC in August of twenty twenty-four, which has been sitting around for a while. The town engineer is grayed out because I didn't have comments, but I did get comments from Tom. The septic system is going in the, the grass area here, so he has no further comments. He was more concerned if it was going in the parking lot than it doesn't. The Office of Fire Prevention is a requirement of these types of applications and didn't have any comments. So they will do their normal building review when the building permit goes in. This is subject to special exception standards, you know, A, that it will be in harmony and promote the general purpose and intent of the chapter. What I would say is, but given the residential zoning around here and the residential uses, I would say that the residential multifamily use is more consistent with zoning than the commercial use. The plot area is sufficient. This is a pre-existing site, so it is what it is. And the property's been utilized like this. It doesn't seem to be any flags of any major issues. The use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties. Again, there doesn't seem to be any issues. A lot of residential development here and then some multifamily. On the other side, is the site suitable? Again, it's a residential zoning. And so this use is more consistent with that. It's not near a church or a school or a theater. F talks about a non-nuisance industry, whether this meets the definition of, in this case, a motel conversion, which it does, subject to special exception standards. Access facilities are existing. It is noted that, in this case, I should point out that the parking, and actually I was incorrect, it is noted on the plan. The, the units are designated for specific parking places. So the units are numbered and the parking spaces are numbered. So, so that's good. Curb cuts have been approved. Again, these are existing here. Eyes about the parking requirements. They show that they're meeting the parking requirement for the units with designated specific parking. Buffers, you know, the buffers are existing. Everything else is improved up to the property lines, but we do have the vegetation. but we do have the vegetation in the front that's pretty robust and hides the building. K talks about, uh, stormwater disposal. This I only grayed out because I was waiting for the engineer's comments, but he had no further comments at this point, so that's okay. Uh, L is about the outdoor sales lot, which is not really applicable here. Uh, and M talks about specific standards, uh, which there are some here. So under those standards, A, um, talks about the, um, review by the fire department, the fire marshal, which we did and we have the comments here and incorporated. B, the application shall be for the entire parcel. That is the case here. All eight units are, are, you know, part of the application. C, the planner should find that the subject parcel lawfully existed for use. It's multiple dwelling resort, resort motel. Um, prior to the date, uh, this does have a pre-existing CO from nineteen seventy-two for eight units. So, uh, D, the total floor area for all buildings shall not exceed the total floor area for the, um, dwellings. There's been no change in the building size at all. You need a minimum of six hundred square feet for each unit. Uh, they are all over six hundred square feet. Some of them, I, you know, we're looking at six thirty, six forty, roughly, something like that. F talks about accessory uses, um, shall only be used by residents or available to residents. There really are no other accessory uses here, um, but that's always a standard condition. Uh, G talks about, um, screening, uh, from neighbors and again, um, there's really no opportunity. We do note, there's actually no parking lot lighting there either, so it's actually pretty good. There are some, there is some lighting on the building, so we just have a general condition in there to bring any lighting into compliance. There might be like two lights at the top there. Probably just bring them down a little bit and, you know, there's not much else there, so it wasn't a huge issue. But we did put it in the resolution. Um, H talks about, uh, twenty percent of the units being available for, you know, vacationers or transient, but, um, that's except in the residential zoning district, so that's not applicable here. I refers to this application as a type-one action, which we did a neg deck back in August of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and that, this is weird, there's a fee of a thousand dollars for the conversion, which was paid. So really, any of the issues was lighting. Um, I just note in there that, uh, you know, we'll request that the building lighting be made code compliant. No additional landscaping. The big thing is, we're getting the septic system upgraded here and I think that's, that's the big plus. And that's what we're gonna get out of this.
That's a good thing.
Um, the dumpster, just before we go to the resolution, look, I, I had the applicant remove the dumpster that was sitting in the front here. There's really nowhere for, to put a dumpster on this property. So I, I note in there to show on the side when we get to the resolution, some either dumpster or refuse area. I'm almost inclined to just show an area where they would keep trash cans as opposed to a, a full-blown dumpster.
Which is, which is what they do.
Which is what I think they're doing now. And if that's gonna be the case, actually, you could probably just state that to me and not, and not, because I don't think a dumpster here is gonna work. And miscellaneous was just about the affidavit. Um, so if you go to the second.
Resolution.
Resolution. We could just go to the page two.
Good conditions here.
Yeah, we're gonna approve the staff report, um, it's dated August fourteenth. And then it's a further resolve to approve the special exception application, uh, for Hampton Cove Estates for the conversion of the eight motel units to the eight cooperative units, uh, subject to the following conditions. Actually, it's just to show the dumpster refuse area and I think you just noted on the map, it's, there's a location in front of the building. Uh, two, the general conditions, um, no dusted on lighting fixtures, uh, no additional lighting on the property without planning board approval and all lighting shall be shielded downward. Uh, prior, um, to the signature of the plans, we don't need A anymore. We have town engineer approval. Uh, the affidavit, um, that has to be submitted along with the ten prints for signature. Uh, and then prior to the issuance of a CO, uh, lighting on the building to be made code compliant and then compliance with all applicable state and local building and fire code requirements.
Sounds good. Any questions for Anthony? Still any issues?
Nope, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Great.
Yeah. Motion for approval, is that?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor.
I oppose extensions.
God, yes, two absent. Thanks again. Anthony, you wanna do the bachi, bachi board?
We're actually gonna do an extension until next time.
Okay, that's, item four is an extension till what date?
Eight twenty-eight, twenty-five.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria and all in favor. I oppose extensions, five yes, two absent. Charlie Fox. Hey, how are you? For, uh, retail cannabis? The short staff report that you.
Yeah, this is, it's a front and back there, you'll see. One. Um, everyone's familiar with the site here. This is the old, uh. Car Club Building, uh, the car club.
That's the service pro.
Yeah, that's correct. So, you're familiar with the property, um, highway business along the, uh, County Route thirty-nine. And then, um, you have, uh, some distance to the corner of McGee Street, uh, and then on the north end there, there's Tuckahoe School. And this vacant property is also owned by the school. Those two properties, while not on the same street as the cannabis facility, uh, does abut the property in, uh, the rear. Um, we have an application. This is a pre-submission conference, so it's not a formal application. Um, so I prepared, uh, a memorandum here or a little report to, uh, identify the issues. You know, the, the, the big thing here, obviously, no, is that it's abutting the school property, um, in the act. So that's, you know, that's the gist of what we're talking about. So I do note in here, so the planning board raises concerns with key provisions of both the special exception standards as well as the Office of Cannabis Management. The first one talks about the general special exception standard. Uh, the characteristics of the proposed use are not such that its proposed location would be unsuitably near a church, school, theater, recreational area, other places of public assembly. I note in here, given the project location immediately, Jason Tucko School, the planner finds the proposed cannabis may be unsuitably located near a school. Uh, two talks about, and Dave is gonna clarify something here, about a recent clarification of memorandum that went out from the Office of Cannabis Management regarding how distances are measured to schools, you know? And apparently, there was a clarification, uh, measuring, um, to the property line of the school as opposed to the door of the school. Um, and that the school did not need to be on the same street, which was one of the other criteria.
Right.
Um, so we note in there, and I do note that, in this case, the Tuckahoe School abuts the property in the rear with the dispensary building well within five hundred feet of the closest property line. Um, so we note that, that that's an issue. And then three talks about a transitional yard, because there's a hundred-foot transitional when you're adjoining, it says residential parcels. Obviously, these, these are not approved with residences, but they are our sixty zone. And given the school location that, uh, I believe this board would impose some type of transitional setback to sort of, uh, maintain some type of distance or separation between the, the school property, uh, and the cannabis, uh, business. So I note here that, given the apparent non-compliance with certain town special exception standards as described above, as well as the Office Cannabis Management regulations, the site suitability for a non-cannabis, a non-medical cannabis dispensary is in question. And, uh, I'll let Dave take it over.
Mr. Gilmore, you have the floor.
So, uh, Anthony was good enough to get me the report yesterday and I just object to the language in number two, where it says, New York State Office of Cannabis Management recently clarified the distance. As Anthony says in the last sentence, it's a regulation. It's codified how it's to be measured and that measurements reflected in your code and the New York code, the New York code of rules and regulations, right? The doctrine of legislative equivalency requires the legislature to go back and change that law. So I think the language should really say that the Office Cannabis Management recently issued a memorandum that questioned the consistency between nine NYCRR one nineteen and Cannabis Law seventy-two six. What it, what this was, was a memorandum by the acting director of OCM who doesn't have the power to change the law. It was her interpretation that there was a conflict, but that has to go through a legislative process.
Didn't she say it was also in conflict with the education law?
Well, the education law, uh, the cannabis law quotes the education law about, about location, right? And, and yes, uh, in, you know, that is cannabis law is in conflict with NYCRR is the thing. But she doesn't have the ability to change NYCRR, that's to be done by the legislature. So I, I think that that language should really reflect, you know, what it was. I think it's, it, it goes a step too far.
It's questioned, not clarified. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I, I'd say it exactly like what happened, issued a memorandum.
Right, you, you read it, I didn't get all that, but.
Right, I said, you know, I said recently issued a memorandum that questioned the consistency.
Anthony, have we got an actual deadline on this?
Um, y- yes, I would say we are.
Because, I mean, I'd rather get these proposing language that deals with legal issue rather than try to piece to.
We would read this, more comfortable with it, but I don't particularly have an objection with what he's saying. He's just factually stating.
Okay.
But it's still.
Are you able to amend that language in accordance with?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I just wanna do note, though, I just wanna keep the rest of it that, um, I mean, the school does not have to be on the same street. I mean, that.
Right, well, it doesn't meet our, it doesn't meet the town's special exception standard.
We'll wordsmith it and come back, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, but the, but the law still says the way that we've been operating, until that law changes. And, and I'll, I'll tell you, at least what I've been hearing and what I've seen, that, that law's gonna get changed so that it comes back to be consistent with NYCRR. There's a, um, there's a proposal in the, uh, New York Senate to do that. And then, um, that the same person, the, the acting director of OCM had a memo on August sixth. The first memo was on July thirtieth. The next memo, um, and, and I should say, Charlie Fox has a license to open from the state today. They've had it since March. And what they say about the impacted licensee action right now, OCM is not, and then it lists the things that, that they're not doing, and one of them, which is applicable to this application, is not directing licensees to stop working toward opening if they are not yet open. So, so OCM is acknowledging the existence of the license and the ability to open still in that memo.
They're not issuing new ones.
I, I would.
Believe it said it weren't, they weren't gonna be issuing new ones under those old guidelines until it's clarified.
Right, but we have one, so it's not applicable to this application.
For the two years? Yeah, for two years.
I, I, it's, it's such a fluid situation. I mean, at first they came out and said two years and now they're, they seem to be walking back this interpretation and, and hopefully they resolve this before it's.
So do you wanna just change the first sentence and leave the rest of it? Like the wording that you said, I'm fine, otherwise if you wouldn't mind, then, um, agreeing to adjourn it to next week, so we can, we work it.
The first two sentences of number two, like, is the second sentence says further, um, they clarified that the school does not have to be on the same street, right? So I just ask for the same language in that, that they issued a memorandum which stayed to be inconsistent.
Then also question the consistency for both. So is that okay?
Yeah.
You can, you can incorporate it, you can amend it?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll make sure Christine looks at it before I.
You wanna do this today or do you want?
Let's do it today.
Okay, so I'll work with Anthony.
Okay, so we'll adopt this today with, with amended language and if, if we need to tweak it further, we can amend it.
Yeah, it'll be okay.
Okay.
If I could just ask the, the, um, the legislature doesn't convene again until January unless there's a special session, which I've heard, you know, may or may not happen, who knows? So the law itself wouldn't be changed until January. So the question is, my question, if it could be answered right now, is how does that affect what we do?
Well, this is just the pre-app, so we're just raising the issue. We don't have to have it resolved at this moment. It's just that if it's not resolved by the time this comes back to us, then we'll have to deal with it then, but right now, we don't have to.
It still doesn't change, point made in number one.
It's, Anthony's going to do it to reflect that both of those conditions.
No, no, she talked about the first bullet point regarding the general special exception standards.
I don't have to.
General special exception conditions.
Those are all the same. That's it. The only thing that's being questioned is two.
Yeah, this, number one is saying, correct, it doesn't fit in with our special exceptions rules.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. It says maybe unsuitably, maybe, right?
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the may, the maybe makes me feel comfortable.
Okay, so Anthony wants to, we'll adopt this now, you'll, you'll forward, you'll circulate the amended language. Sounds good. Do we have a motion to adopt the pre-submission? Motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose extensions, five yes, two absent. Thanks, Mr. Gilmore. They are, are you ready to jump in or? Okay, seven one five, County Route thirty-nine.
Pass this down. Sure, it's here. You wanna come up here?
Sure.
It's, this is a pretty straightforward one. This is where, um, an existing automobile, sales and repair, um, is also to legalize a second story.
We'll take it off.
Yeah.
Thanks. We got enough.
Yeah, so it's to legalize the second story, um, and formalize the parking. So the original site plan on this, um, had a dumpster at the back, um, the pre-submission process, um, there was guidance for a twenty-foot buffer, um, on the back and then I think fifteen on the east side.
What's in there now? What, what facility's in there now?
Oh, it's an automobile repair and sales. They have both uses on the property.
And sales?
Yes, it's like.
Is that Georgopolis Motors?
Yes, exactly.
Gotcha.
Yes, and yes. So there was a second story. They were gonna originally have an office, but really was there any room for that?
Right.
Um, so it's to make it simpler, they've, uh, it's just storage now. They've modified it to be just storage. Um, we had, uh, limited referrals on this to the fire marshal, town engineer, who had no concerns. Um, and the fire marshal, really, their concern was just like protecting any, uh, utilities on the side, the bollards or, you know, protection. Of course, we have screening requirements. So that was, uh, that's the fire marshal, uh, from July twenty-ninth. Uh, everybody else, it was letter, letter, um, local determination, public works, no issues. The property does enjoy the u, the two uses on the property. They got a variance from the Sony Brook Hills way back in ninety-five for that. Um, so it is a car repair, car storage, display for sales. So control it a little bit, maybe, and so I thought maybe they would show where the car display would be on the property.
You don't want display out front.
Yeah, and then make sure that the front bay area, anything in front of the building, that was my recommendation to kept clear from display and storage. So that was my big issue with that. And the other thing is that the building has, um, on Google Maps, you can see the building has four lights that just wash the building and that's not permitted by the code. So asking them to remove that privacy out.
Is there any opportunity for cross-access among the aerial? I know there's a great change.
They do show the cross-access. I didn't put it in there. Um, do you wanna do like a general cross-access? That kinda makes sense, right? Okay.
The property, the property to the west already had that cross-access put in there and you can see the driveway kinda rode right up to it.
RJW or whatever, that's the one next door.
That's correct. So, so, right, so we made sure that we lined up what we have with them.
Okay.
It seemed to go along with what.
Do you want implemented now? I'm not quite sure about the grade, do you?
It does drop off.
Yeah.
It would be like a ramp or something?
It's pretty, yeah.
Certainly would be, benefit your site because.
Three or four foot drop off.
If you're ever gonna go east, and you can't make a left turn out of there, you could head across the back, go down Tuckahoe and come out by Sandy Hollow or something. Or somewhere, McGee.
Right, right.
So is that something you wanna implement now?
Sure, we can, we can.
Okay.
He could still put a gate across the other, right?
Uh, yeah.
Cause I think, could he go on? Cause he's got concerns about just people pulling, coming in from the back. He'd rather have people pulling in from the front, is what he's always been mentioning to me.
Okay.
Cause he mentioned that back in O Even.
Doesn't that sort of defeat the purpose of the cross-access? Well, the, the surrounding property is the golf course, so there is something to that, that that's not gonna be developed, that ever gets developed. That ever gets developed, that's going to be a, that's going to be a different animal, right? The golf course is, goes, um.
But for people getting out of that property, um, it's much safer to go to Tuckahoe Lane.
Yep.
And we don't often see that, you know, direct connection.
Would impact the cross access, absolutely right, but I would tend to think.
Logical.
I think while he's in operation, more people are going to be on thirty nine are going to see it.
Right.
You'd have to know it's there to want to come in from Tuckahoe Lane.
Yeah, I don't think.
I see, you're saying coming in from Tuckahoe.
It would be mostly for, it would be for exiting if they wanted to go east.
That's exactly right, so I'm I'm thinking when business is open, he'll open up the gate, eh, you know, when he's got business, but then the business is closed. This has already got a a gate that closes off the back anyway at the moment.
It just, it it seems illogical because it's again dependent upon the individual operating the property versus then we are allowing a gate and it's, we don't have a policing of whether it's open or closed and what times. It doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I don't know that we've ever gotten involved in cutting off access by, you know, hours or days of the week or anything like that.
The cross access goes with the property, not the owner.
Hmm.
Right.
So it's either.
You could have signage, install signage. Claire, I mean, the, I I know the site, it's a full sea of asphalt on both highways. Are there any opportunities to get any?
Additional plantings?
Any type of greenery in the in the front.
Unfortunately, the trouble is his, his, um, he's got the bays there in front, so when you.
Oh, oh.
Pulling in and out.
Oh, the garage bays are there, okay.
So when you're pulling in and out, it makes it really difficult, he said he tried planting once before and everything died on him.
Everything died, yeah, I see, okay.
Yeah, and they're very active bays, they were, I went by today, so.
We're going to limit display and.
Correct.
Yes, to the sides.
To the sides.
Yeah, um, and that keeps, you know, that would keep an aisle free in the front too, so people could pull it, pull in without having a, you know, um, okay, so I'm going to put the cross access ability in there, obviously I want to mention that there's an existing cross access to the east, sorry, west, right?
East.
To the west, um, and it'll be a cross access easement to the west. Do you want future to the east at all or no?
To the.
Because of the golf course.
Oh, no.
They're surrounded by the golf course on both sides.
Yeah, the golf course.
Yes, so, okay, just cross access to the west, a form of an easement, okay.
Well, could the golf course people get out that way too?
No, they they, their parking is all on the front there, yeah.
You can conflict, conflicting uses. So we're, uh, Claire, did you want to, are, were you going to act on this today?
I can do that, so I want to have a a way, a finding about the cross access to the west pursuant to, obviously we have a lot of, um, mesh plans as it, we had plans for the other one, and then it'll be an easement prior to the signature of the plans, they'll have to submit these.
Are there any other conditions we need to be aware of?
No, um, I can read them, uh, so indicate all utilities down those site plan, indicate the three foot clearance we maintain with bollards, indicate the type of species and height of the evergreen trees within the northeast buffers, note the width of the two buffers to the northeast, indicate the area of outdoor storage and display of vehicles on site, fronts of the building to get clear of display storage, oxwood should be noted to be three foot tall. Um, is that, I think this is sufficient for the cross access, right, that note on the plan, okay. Other than the general conditions, which is the three foot clearance, the, uh, lighting, um, clients of the fire marshal, and then items to be submitted would, will include, um, the cross S easement agreements and the legal documents.
Is there any lighting that you're adding for the display of the car?
No, no additional lighting.
Additional.
And I'm just going to make sure that all lighting is conformance, I can't, I haven't been to the back, I just make sure there's no floodlights or things like that, so.
Okay.
I think for the most part, he's just trying, I'm sorry, I think he's just trying to kind of legalize what he has there, just, you know, as as everything kind of.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, so just on the cross access on the east side, thinking through, the people that are exiting the golf course right now have to make a left turn if they want to go east on County Road thirty nine, is that accurate? So why wouldn't we connect the golf course with this on that same northerly property line?
If you just do a, a future, we could do a future cross ac- there's no golf course, you know, they don't have a connection.
There's no agreement on that, their side, right?
So it would just be a future cross access easement agreement, which we could, you could ask for.
Right, but I think if the golf course came in and said, we're having issues with people that live further east getting out of here and they wanted to implement it, they could come forward and do that.
Mm-hmm, yes, that is a tool.
Let's go put it in there so it could be pursued.
So you're going to mark, going to amend that plan to show.
Then the other one would be labeled future cross access.
Future cross access.
Right.
Um, would you want to see it particularly or just be more in general?
I think in line with.
It makes sense there.
Be limin', okay.
In line with that, that would be an additional condition.
Great.
Any other conditions? Kate, you want to do the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Hurrah.
Second by David. Is that second?
Second.
Okay, we have motioned in the second, all in favor, I oppose extensions. Five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
You're singing again, thank you for coming in. You want to pass a match? More paper.
Thank you.
Claire, are you going to keep going with the the vote pay, item seven?
Mm-hmm.
Let's be on, vote pay it.
So this one, I have three also. So.
Your hat fits here, how are you? Come on up. You might have one more chair, folding chair for you. When you get a chance, just identify yourself for the audio record, it's clear.
Kevin Brown, Vogel and Brown, we're attorneys for the app.
Lou Brasso from, uh, Next Gen Property Management LLC.
Chris Omskog, PW Grocer Consulting Engineering.
Great, great to have you. So we had a public hearing on this and no comments.
Okay, so, um, I'll just start, um, did you get a copy of it by email or no?
Yes, we got it.
Okay.
Just found the way over.
Oh, yeah, I know, it was very short notice, and we don't have to adopt this today, if you have more questions, you have some questions for them, we can refine this. Um, so this is an application, there's an existing sand mine. Um, it's the address I've gotten there, it's, uh, you can see with the, the open waterway there, the, the pond, uh, or lake. Uh, it is proposed to be continued to be mined, uh, they have an application with the DEC for, um, an expansion of the mine to create a approximately a fourteen acre, um, lake where they would put on, in two phases, floating, uh, photovoltaic, which would, um, generate solar, uh, energy on the property. So, um, the two phases would be seven acres and seven acres approximately, that's what I got from the application they've submitted. I think the board, when they first saw this, had a lot of questions, they came for like a work session, um, they resubmitted this information. Um, and I think they're still with the pending application with the DE, the DEC for the mining, so I'm not quite sure if this is go- going to be a pond of fourteen acres, which is part of my, our original questions, like is, does this exist, when it will exist? Are we acting on something prematurely here, um, was part of my, the question that I had. Um, so do you want me to go through it, do you have questions for them first or, go ahead?
No, we do have, um, Regina Baicop who worked on the site plan for them, and we also have Steve Olney from Mets, who's, he's the one that's, uh, does the floating solar and has been involved in.
Okay.
He's been, they both have been before the board before, but we'd like to get him on because.
Do we, um, have those people added?
Yep. Should be in the waiting room.
I did give him a heads up that they're coming in soon. Um.
So I know we had a work session on this, we've got a whole tu- tutorial on how this works and.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Mm-hmm.
What are the, uh, what are the central issues you feel we have to deal with?
Well, the big issue is the use, I feel like there's this, there's a big issue of the use, and this may be, this is absolutely the right question for the chief building inspector here.
Okay.
Because, um, this, the code for commercial seems to reference roof mounted or ground mounted. And this is obviously a floating, it's right in the name, right, floating voltaic. There is mention about ballast, like if you can't put it on the ground because of, you know, issues about poking through, maybe like a, um, a landfill.
Yeah, like like the North Sea landfill.
Yeah, and the North Sea landfill, they talk about ballasts, but they, again, it's roof or it grounds. So I don't see that the code says that, but that would be an interpretation for the chief. So I put that right foremost, right in the front of the application.
Okay, that's, I don't want to, okay.
Yeah, that's number one, um, not saying no, it just don't, I'm a very black and white kind of person, I like to sit, you know, see that it says that.
It's important.
Yeah.
Because this is all new technology, and we need to understand what our code says and what maybe the code should be saying.
Yeah, and may, eh, as it, as it changes, things could be updated a hundred percent, it's not enough.
It's going to benefit them too because.
Yes, and then so that, the pro- promer general of that is for them to get a termination from the chief building inspector about the use prior to any formal application submitted to us.
And they'll have to meet special exception standards.
Right.
And two.
Mm-hmm, so there's a, there's a whole section, three thirty, one sixty two point twenty four, uh, solar energy. Um, did we get them coming in, Peter?
Steven Onie.
Is his name Steven?
Yes.
Okay, and then Regina, uh, Regina Baicop?
Yes. She, uh.
There's a Steven Onie with the hand up, did you say bring him on or?
Yes, please, thanks, and then a Regina Baicop, a PW Grocer too, right?
Correct.
All right, they're both coming on.
Great, thanks so much.
Claire, help me remember, is this one of the places where the town wants to amortize the sand use?
Yes, yeah, so that is item number four.
Okay. I don't think we had this in the packet, so I.
Yeah, we didn't have it in the pa- I was working on it as, um, you know, yesterday, so, um, so they only got it today too. So if we definitely want to, you know, look at this a little bit more, but yes, uh, so I mentioned the sand mines, this is part of that because it is located in, for two reasons, the two reasons that they have, one is that it's residentially zoned, the second one is a special groundwater area, which is obviously Central Pine Barrens and Aqua Protection Ovalator, which are both of those, both of those follow that.
So they fall within the, they've mined ninety percent, so they're operating for one more year?
Oh, I don't, is that what that says? I just think it just says you're operating landmine, a sand mine.
It's all subject to the amortization process.
Right, so the amortization process, I just looked at the definition of.
Yes, it's saying.
Two parties here, uh.
Got him on.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the amortization process, I think is part of how we need to look at this because if the sand mine can't continue, and we don't know that, with that question answered, then it's not fourteen acres, it's seven or something else.
Correct, now, if I could just address that for one minute, there, uh, I believe there's a misconception that the, uh, mine approval is a predicate to site plan approval for the, for the mine, i- it's not. We, we were, when this first came out, I said, geez, we already got five acres approved and we're digging it, and it's now there. We also have already gone through a process of getting a complete application with DEC for the full fourteen, which required doing, answering a lot of questions, noise, water quality, we answered all those, DEC, we were a complete application, we've gone through the whole process. We done even more water sampling, we got all that information together. Uh, and then the other advantage was following de- so if you put in a solar facility, you have to have a plan to decommission, that's, there's two elements that, how you taking out the panels, how you taking out the transformers, then what's the post-use, oftentimes it's open, it's open land, uh, maybe they'll go back to ag. In this case, we already had a rec plan all drawn up for fourteen acre lake sitting there, that was part of the complete application for DEC. However, I, the most important thing here is the DEC permit is not a predicate to site plan approval. I'll give you an example I'm working on right now in the town of Porter in Western New York. It's a twenty acre fish aquaculture.
Where, where, where is this, I'm sorry?
Town of Porter, Porter, Western New York.
Okay, so it's not on Long Island?
No, it's a farm pond, it's a farm pond, it's going to be used for aquaculture while I am perch. What happens is you go to the town, you go through the site plan approval, it also has a hatchery and all that, you go through the site plan. Then, once you complete that, you go to DEC and DEC issues a mine permit. The reason they do that, it's called a construction mine permit, they do it for water bodies and they do it, uh, in Hudson Valley very frequently because, um, for instance, the Highlands, if you're putting in a, I don't know, some kind of commercial building, you, you have to clear the rock because it's all straight up and down in the Highlands. If you're going to take the rock and not just use it on site and it's going to be a volume of material, you're going to be selling it offsite, DEC issues what's called a construction mining permit. So in our view, we thought, this is great, we've already been through answering all of DEC's questions to get the complete application, we've done all the design for that. Now we come in for site plan, we can get this rolling, get this thing done in a couple of years. That was a couple of years ago, what's happening now is that they're investing the money from mining into providing solar, that's what they're doing. Uh, right now, we see what's happening with the tax credits, uh, it was a pretty safe investment with the production, the, uh, for the, uh, investment tax credits, it's still a workable project and and Steve can talk about this because he's the one that's done the feasibility on it. But it's getting, uh, tighter and tighter, the possibility to get this done, costs are also going up because of tariffs. So, you know, if we can't get, we can't get through this in a reasonable time, um, you know, what's going to happen is we're going to have probably a fenced off area out there that will reclaim that when we put the mine plan in, the initial mine plan to get to water, we had to be able to get up and down with conveyors to mine it out, so, I mean, before the conveyors, he had to take trucks and all. So we left a haul road mound right down the right side, it's, it's, it meets the slope requirements, but it's a east-west facing. So wh- when we first, maybe we can do the floating in the north and put in land based in the south, but because that runs north-south, it faces east-west, it's, and even, uh, it probably almost impossible to anchor, you know, the type of foundations you need for fixed facility on a slope.
Can I ask you, um, let's, let's just ask you, huh, what is the scope of the mining permit you have now?
Right now, we have the five acre, the, the, we have the, the east, this, the east side and the north, and then the next permit is to come, was to finish up.
So five acres is what you had?
No, we had.
And the application for the larger was put in in twenty twenty one.
Right, so e- even if it was phase one that you might be considering, that would be predicated on the DEC saying yes to the enlarged mining?
No, it's not pred- no, if we get a site plan approval, we.
For phase one?
Yeah, DEC just goes through and makes sure you're not doing anything crazy out there for site plans. It's, it's called a construction mining permit and it required for water bodies. So, as, as I said, I'm working on a twenty acre aquaculture facility upstate, they go through site plan with the town and DEC comes in and issues a permit.
Hmm.
You have to match, and then they say, okay, make sure, and they look at their criteria to make sure everything's, everything's copacetic under their records.
I just, so I want to ask a few foundational questions because we're kind of, we're talking about a project upstate, we're talking about the solar, but, um, just generally reconciling, you have a permit for five acres, what is the total, um, area that is able to be mined?
Thirty-two, the, the, the life of mine acreage, it's already all affected, and we had a CO from the town initially saying you could go down to Evergreen Ave, it's thirty-two point nine acres.
So thirty is a CO from the town of Southampton for sand mine?
We had the CO and a letter during the original coordination to, that said, hey, you can mine down to Evergreen Ave, thirty-two, it was all affected, it's all affected.
Okay, so.
We're not sharing anything, it might be beneficial at some point, I know there's quorum rules and everything, but for you folks to come out and just take a look.
So. So, um, all right, so just bear with me. Thirty-two point nine acres total available, five acres permitted and excavated out now.
That's the water body.
The water body, that's been mined.
Right now, the, on, the area that has not been affected at all, at all, is just the setback, twenty-five foot setback along the boundaries. And not even some of them goes to the south.
Okay, so in, I'm just reading the, um, the article on the non-conforming sand mine amortization, because there's these four different categories. So you fall into the seven years, um, category to phase out, is that accurate?
Well, that's when you're tied to the DEC permit. And the problem with the DEC permit is those are all in this cycle of litigation that's still going on. It's still going on, it'll probably be going on for another five, ten years.
I'm talking about the town's amortization law? So you would fall into the category of having mined, uh, less than fifty percent of the property? Is that accurate?
I don't think we know that.
We've mined the entire, the entire thing has been affected, like, it's about the depth of reserves. Now, this is also new law that came out recently. And it was a Phillips Town case from nineteen eighty-eight, I believe. Once the area is in mining, the, the depth and the slopes are controlled by DEC permit. That's all been put into a tussle with all this litigation that's out there right now.
So I'm asking whether a categorization has been made on this property by Southampton Town with this new amortization code?
I just, I can't answer that.
You can't answer, she doesn't know.
Because they haven't made, they haven't made the application yet.
We have to, yeah, we have not made that application.
Okay, so to.
December.
Right, so the point of, the point that I was making, I think last time you came in, and is still an open question, is, um, to have that determination, I feel is very important. Because it's acknowledging the value of the property, and it's giving the owner of the property and the operator time to extract the value of the property over the, an appropriate amount of time, right? Um, this project is, um, of course, an investment, but also adding additional value to the property. So my comment earlier was that potentially that amortization period should be shortened because the value is being added into the property of your rental, you know, to the solar company, and so that we would reduce the environmental impact of the mining, um, by reducing the amount of time left. So that's for the record and for consideration. And I think all of that is related, I understand what you're saying. But we are, Hudson Valley is not a sole source aquifer situation, this is different, it's much different.
And, and if, if the applicant got the approval, they wanna move as fast as possible and be out of there.
Right, so we need the answers to those questions, I think, to properly consider it.
Originally came in and, um, we, we can, we had to come in with the phase plan. And we provided the, I think Steve provided the, uh, phase plan. I remember we came in in twenty twenty-four, he said it'd be about four years to get this built, or five years. That was twenty twenty-four, the, the five acre area is, is mine. So we believe if we get the approvals, we'll have, uh, floating solar will be installed on the north side. We had to develop a phase plan, we put in the north side first, and then move the dredge down and take.
Right, so my interpretation is the cart is before the horse here, because, um, of all the issues that I've raised.
But what I'm saying is, we'll be, with this approval, we'll be, I mean, we, we won't be waiting for the market. Uh, to, you know, we'll be moving the sand as fast, because we, we have a two-year, three-year window, one year.
Yeah, with the amortization, I mean, there's a chance that they would hold off all seven years as price of material goes up. Maybe they hold on to it and take it out slower. If they got approval to do the solar, they're gonna be racing to do the solar, to get as many tax credits as possible, and get the material, the sand out of the way, and sell it for less than they would if they hold on to it. So it, it's kind of, yes, it's cart in front of the horse, but each way. And they can't make a decision on how to, how quickly to move ahead if they don't know what, what they'll be allowed to do with the property in the future. So I agree, it, it is.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, that's where a lot, this happens a lot, where the applicant's, um, goals of, you know, financial gain of the property and use of the property is in conflict with what our job is, right? So that's what I'm communicating to you. And that's my opinion, I see the floor to others.
With all respect, I don't think there's a great conflict here. The plan, this town is committed to sustainable development. They're willing to put their investment into, into a long-term investment to provide solar for the next twenty-five years. That, we're in line, this isn't just about profits.
It's a different, um, it's a different, um, sustainability initiative, and solar won't matter at all if a sole source aquifer is, um, degraded. So the project, I agree with you, it's exciting about solar, but also there's a conflict. And when you read this, um, article, I mean, they were deliberate in putting some significant language in here about sand mines adversely affecting towns' drinking water resources, and thus the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. I think, you know, if, there's a conflict there of the two uses, and so.
I agree there's concern.
Important to acknowledge.
I agree there's concern, and I did send a letter, um, to Chairwoman Park. She has a letter where I went through in detail the history of this site and the groundwater monitoring at this site. They're in the voluntary program. It, they, they've been monitoring for a couple, well, over a decade. There's been no impact. They also took all, they electrified all the operations. The haul trucks aren't going by the water body, there's electric conveyors, they went to an electric dredge. We had a decade of data, including the voluntary program, samples for things that we had nothing to do with, radio, nuclearized. We have all that data, I provided a detailed summary of that in a letter. Is that the letter?
No.
No.
That's another layer for me to turn.
Detailed letter, uh, to, uh, Chairwoman. It, it laid out the history of sampling at this site, groundwater monitoring. The fact that even when there was a, uh, they got rid of their mulch operation as soon as there was a question that that might impact groundwater. Uh, there was a mulch site through the southwest. Suffolk County Health Services came in to sample that site, and inadvertently sampled ours because they misunderstood the groundwater flow. That came back with no, no readings.
Okay, so this is a pre-submission, right? I just, you know, the whole purpose of the pre-submission, um, conference and the report is to identify issues that will have to be addressed when you submit your application. And, you know, so Claire has recorded those, and then, you know, likely a hydrologist's report, would, we would get our own consultant to review the data that you're providing. And so that's, I'm trying to give you all the cards to say, here's what questions I will ask, at least, when that comes to bear.
Point to the letter which must not have made it into the record.
No, it, it did, it's, I don't just have it right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure we saw it, but it was a while ago.
It was two weeks ago.
More than a few weeks ago.
Whenever it was. I sent it in, I sent it in, it turned the, at the end of the.
Yeah, I mean, if anything comes in, it gets distributed to the entire board, so.
If you read that through and see the history of both this site and the groundwater sampling, I think you'll, you'll, reasonably science-based, reasonably, you'd say, no, I understand there's a, a concern of exposing groundwater. I understand that, it makes sense. They're just as concerned as everybody here, because if a problem happens there, they're shut down. So they've done all this sampling for years and provided, it's cost a small fortune. The DEC, uh, program, the voluntary program, it's over a hundred, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year. We brought in the, the records to, uh, last time, it's eight thousand pages of data.
It's, the planning board won't consider that unless they actually take, you know, this goes forward and it's a secret. You know, we will look at it com, you'll look at it comprehensively, but that issue about the amortization will be the ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, that's, to me, that's, I'll echo what was just said, in that I think understanding how the town is addressing the, the amortization for sand mines in general, and then specifically for this piece of property, I personally think we need an answer to that as part of the formal application. Cause I think that may affect what you can do and what we should be looking at.
I think the, the report captures that.
I, I, we haven't gone through it, so.
Yeah, do you wanna say that, on sand mines? Do you say the planning board?
Maybe y'all met that.
Yeah.
Cause this is very preliminary, this is, you know, pre-submission.
This is pre-submission.
The, the, the issues that were raised here are gonna be examined in greater detail.
Yeah, when we get, yeah.
When we get the formal application.
But I, but I think you heard two planning board members echoing that question, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So it's just an outline.
And it is useful, you know, to have these pre, pre-conference, you know, pre-submission conferences, because you're saying, look, like, we've already put a lot of money into this, we wanna know what we're in for, if we're gonna move ahead with this application. And so in fairness, you know, it may not be the news that you want, but I think it's, it's very fair to say, here's, I'm not gonna surprise you later with this, these are the questions that we need to answer.
I mean, absolutely, I, we, I'll, I'll, yeah.
This is a good thing.
Yeah.
I'm kinda sensitive to the time, you know, you've got sort of the, sort of Damocles hanging over your application with these expiring credits. And you have to have shovel-ready projects ready to go.
But we're hoping to get phase one, so to be, I don't, I, again, I don't know exactly what's, how those are gonna play out. But right now, we have to have, uh, construction started by, I believe, next April.
Yeah.
If it doesn't change.
Our constructions already started, and we can, by next April, we could be, we'll be floating panels, they'll be in.
That's the intent.
Right now, yeah, that's when we went to the phase plan. That's, it took us a while, once we were told, no, you can't have a four-year window, or elapsed after two years, I think you said, Claire. So we went back to the engineers, Steve went back with D three, and they redesigned it to do it in two phases, which, what it reflected in this map, the north ramp to look, they'll be able to finish the north, load the, look, construct and place the panels on the north side and hook up, that'll be by next year. And then.
This point of the project, I think it's wonderful.
But I'm just saying, and then we had, no, this is what was all designed and is in your records now, and then we, then they, then bring the dredge down, decommission out this way and put in that within, I think the timeline, which is in the materials we submitted you. Uh, what, what is it, the timeline?
Well, whatever it is, we're really dependent on some of the other decisions, right? We have to get some of the other decisions first.
Not really, if you give a site plan approval, and we'll go ahead and do this, and we'll be.
I just don't understand the, the, the threshold of the DEC permit that is in place now.
As I said, the, that's, the DEC permit is not a predicate to site plan approval.
No, 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 I'm asking you, how, how are we approving phase one of seven acres when you can't have a pond of seven acres yet, cause DEC hasn't approved it?
Because you're issuing a construction permit, you're issuing a site plan approval, and this is.
But it doesn't exist yet, or the DC hasn't approved it yet?
And no site is, are all the ground conditions, it's cut and fill with every application you get for construction, isn't there?
How is a, how are you hiring a hydrogeologist to study a seven acre pond that doesn't exist yet? Or fourteen acre pond?
Well, just at this juncture, we're considering the pre-submission conference report. We don't even have an application to consider approving, so, right, you know what I'm saying? So today, really, our action is to, you know, we've addressed, all the issues are in the report.
I think completing the processes between the DEC and us, and right now you're in a pre-submission conference.
Right.
You have it in our world.
There's no application.
You have an idea.
But, but what I'm wondering, are these maps in front of you?
If they're part of the record and you sent them in as part of your pre-submission packet, then they are in front of us.
Concepts.
But nobody's, well, not formally, nobody's worked it, got it.
And they're raising the question, they're telling you upfront, these are the questions we want answered before you make your actual application.
And this hasn't gone to the town engineer or any, or, or any technical people that are part of the town's approval process?
So Claire, you, you'll be able to capture some of these.
Yeah, I'm thinking, uh, I'm adding some language that the, the plane board, uh, the board would like to see a determination on the amortization from the ZBA prior to any application that you see.
Right, so when you put your application in, um, addressing all the issues in Claire's report, we'll produce a complete application so that we could start the secret process and review it.
All right.
But we don't have that application completed yet to consider.
Are there any other items for the pre-submission?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, basically, otherwise, I just point out, it's in the Pine Barrens, Aqua Protection, New York State archa, archaeologically sensitive area. Um, I don't know the extent of clearing to date, so anything that's natural on the property, it's hard to tell on the plans. Um, and then I just point out where the access is on the property through Evergreen Avenue, so.
So, I, no, yeah, part of this was, we already had a mine plan that showed all this, showed the already affected area. And we're saying, well, we've not touched any trees, we don't have to do anything, but we've already got a permit for five acre lake. So we'll, we'll go through, order the process.
Yeah, that's fine, and we'll take it one step at a time.
At some point, uh, the site plan which you offered, we may, you know, very well take you up on, going to visit the site. We may very well take you up on that.
I think that, it's hard to look at this and understand what's, what's there about being there.
I know there's quorum rules, and you have to go and want to through it.
Yeah. So with that amended language, and Claire, we can go ahead and adopt this.
You can adopt that, and I can give them a copy, so they have it to go forward.
To adopt the pre-submission? Second by Kate, all in favor? Aye, both extensions, five yes to absent. Thanks so much for coming in and sliding through with us. We get there. Are we going, you go in order, Seth?
Oh, you got it.
And then Maynor?
Item eight. Here as well, Maynor and Millen. Just get your. There it is.
Maynor. Maynor.
Thanks. Okay, so we're looking at a, it's a, in essence, it's a lot line, uh, land transfer from one lot to another. That's going from twelve, twelve Red Creek to ten Red Creek, four thousand, uh, excuse me, land transfer of two thousand and forty square feet. Uh, we had looked at this, uh, back in April, I had put together a report on this matter. Uh, we had tabled it at such time because I had, uh, under the notion that the state's park and recreation, uh, had deemed this not worthy of a phase one B. Uh, and then we decided that the best, our, our town code requires it, so. Uh, the applicant went, went back and hired Hartgen to conduct such a study, and that study concluded that there were no archaeological artifacts found, and that it deemed it not worthy of further, uh, study. So, uh, that being said, we now can, we passed the last hurdle for this, uh, for this application. We've had the public hearing back, um, back in January. Uh, we have looked at it, and we have, we've also gone through the two ninety-two thirty-nine B for this application, as it is, uh, land word of Squire's Pond. We made some recommendations to the conservation board, which they have approved. Uh, and we put together a conditional approval with those, uh, conditions.
And this is APOD?
Sorry?
This is APOD, say.
Uh, no, it's not.
It's not, okay.
It's not, but it is in the wetland inventory, being within two hundred feet of, uh, Squire's Pond. So if it pleases, uh, the board, I, I, at this point, I, I would just like to read in, uh, the conditions that we, we had approved by the conservation board.
Okay.
So we will be, uh, with approval, we're, we're requiring the, the following covenants, that's, they're listed on, uh, page five. There would be no, no further subdivision.
Right, you only have four pages.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my, uh, my report, I'm mistaken.
Run the, yeah, approval.
Yeah, no, that's three. Yeah, so the, uh, be it further resolved, I, I was calling out the, uh, the covenants at the bottom of page three, that there would be no further subdivision or lot line modification unless approved by the planning board. That there would be three, three inch drainage for all future impurious surfaces, including roofs, driveways, and tennis courts. Uh, then a minimum buffer, uh, zone of fifty feet to the west of the rear lot line. So that would be Anthony's pointing out there. Uh, prohibiting turf fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, or similar treatments, landscaping, or other clearing or disturbance of natural vegetation. landscaping, or other clearing or disturbance of natural vegetation, inclusive of excavation and/or deposition of film. So this is that Lot Two, if you put buffer. And then the standard setbacks, minimum of a hundred and twenty-five feet setbacks for structures inclusive of driveways, end-it-grade patios, or decks, or other accessory structures, a minimum of a hundred and fifty-foot setback for future wastewater disposal and/or sanitary systems, and that would apply to both Lot One and Two, twelve and ten, Red Creek. The installation of leaders and gutters, and other stormwater control devices, project-limiting fencing consisting of haybells and silt, silt fencing, and that the applicant shall notify current planning within twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours in advance of, of the construction for Lot Two.
So I'm just looking at the, the square footage, the two pieces together are about forty, or fifty, two thousand square feet?
Yes, one, one being forty thousand, let me, let me check my numbers and get the right, one is, the one to the north is forty thousand six twenty-five, and the one to the south is eleven thousand five hundred sixteen.
Two thousand is going to the eleven five, so it'll, it'll be still considerably less than a half acre.
It's a substandard lot, but we're not, we're not creating that lot, this has already been.
Exactly.
So just that the board knows, they got a single and separate determination from the ZBA, so that second lot exists at eleven thousand square feet.
So it's a pre-existing, substandard lot.
And we're just making it a little bit better, actually.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the setbacks, and they're fa- fairly robust for such a small lot.
It's true, right. So, yeah, yes, that's.
Standard conditions.
We have the gist.
Very good, do we have motion for approval? Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, five yes, two absent, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, actually, thank you.
Anthony, are you going to jump in on Cedar Field?
That one's off the agenda.
Okay, item nine is off.
So is item ten.
Item ten is off. Very good, keep going.
Yeah.
How about the Nathan?
Nathan's having a cook thing.
I'm going to do that, but let me let my colleagues do the applicants first, number twelve is also off the agenda.
Twelve is off, do you have applicants here, or?
I'll let the board.
Well, Claire's here.
Who's next?
Oh, Robert L. Billy and Supply, that's to a student lead agency on that one, the ZBA realistically made you see at their last meeting, so that's, and also, I think you'd want to hire a traffic consultant to review the traffic on that one, so I'll solicit some, I'll solicit the, you know.
The usual cast of characters.
On that one, and we'll have that hopefully at the next meeting, the one after.
So right now, our resolution is just to lead, just lead agency, do we have motion? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, five yes, and two absent.
I'm sorry, thank you.
You're good to go, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry for the wait.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Oh, Claire, you're up here, you might as well, is there anything?
Yeah, I have, uh.
Sandy Hollow?
Yeah, twenty-five Sandy Hollow, so that is to deem an application complete.
I've been looking at that for like several years, it seems.
Twenty-five Sandy Hollow?
I think so. I may be exaggerating slightly, but I know I've seen this a bunch of times, am I right?
Well, you saw it a few years, a couple years ago.
Yes, that's right, that's the cottage.
Right, where you're making the bend to get onto thirty-nine.
Isn't that where the, the statues are?
There, right?
No, no, different spot.
The snowman.
This is the cottage complex.
Snowman.
Yes.
Adjacent to the cottage.
Adjacent to the cottage.
Yes.
Oh, Swedes, oh, sorry.
And it's got the, all the mature landscaping and.
It's going back. You see the steam, you chug your way over.
I thought it all on my desk. No, I did it.
Let me just identify yourself for the audio, if you could.
We can speak, and I can run down and get it, I had the super documents that I had done for this, this is to consider secret, and, and, I still have it right here, I know where it's sitting on my desk, so. The deck, or you guys want to go to another thing that might quest?
We'll be here.
Go back in order.
I'll wait.
Okay. Seth, I think we jumped over a couple of your.
Yeah, go to the number fourteen, your, forty-nine.
Caldwell Homes, okay. Yep, item fourteen.
Okay. And we got, so this is Caldwell Homes, Lot fourteen, forty-nine, Birchwood.
Thank you.
Uh, this is found in the R twenty and the APOD, this lot came under construction with a brand-new home, and during construction, it was a hundred percent cleared, so we, we were, they were informed early on in the process that there was some over-clearing going on, and they took it upon themselves to start the revegetation as they were building, and then they brought in the, the finalized revegetation plan when they were fin, they had finished construction. So I had to work with them, because it was a work done, it was a bit of a complicated scenario, as of course, they're now at the CO stage, I did update their revegetation plan, with, they had missed particularly the putting in any grasses, so I had made them go out and redo their revegetation plan. They do show that they had achieved the ten thousand, in fact, ten thousand one hundred and seventy-five feet of square foot of revegetation with white oaks, inkberries, blueberries, and I had asked them to add Pennsylvania sage as well, so.
It's all been, it's all been planted, it's all been planted because they want to sell the house.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I was literally getting surveys showing that it was in compliance, so it was, it was a tricky situation to get, get this whole thing figured out and, and, and done.
Okay.
We're, we're there, I'd like to see, see how it all turned out, and.
So you haven't been physically.
I have to do, well, I have to have the re-veg plan, I have been, but I have not, not been since we've done a new plan.
Okay, so we, we, we approve this pending your.
Yes, there's always, there's always a site inspection.
Yeah, because a lot of times, it's after the fact, okay, yeah.
Okay, motion to, motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, five yes, two absent, and Seth, do you want to jump it forward?
I might as well, so, yes, another parcel located in the APOD, this is four sixty-five Middle Line Highway. I, Rick is here to represent the applicant.
Rick Wasnowski, the Reiner Group, eight sixteen Montalk Highway.
So, yeah, this parcel's located in the CR two hundred, it's approximately four point eight acres, or two hundred and twelve, two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-five square feet, the bulk of which is two hundred thousand, so they are allowed fifteen percent clearing, or thirty thousand square feet. This parcel had cleared forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five, approximately twenty-one point four seven percent. It's been, the application was originally submitted in August fourteenth of twenty-three, so this one has been kicking around with construction, it became a multi-phase project where the house was built, there was some clearing, some over-clearing, they had come in, they had, they had filed then, they had started a revegetation, at which point, there was another application to move forward with the tennis court. I had been in touch with the applicant, so we had granted them permission to go ahead and, and get the tennis court done as well, so that we could finalize this entire thing, so it became a two-phase kind of revegetation. In hindsight, I'm going to probably not want to do that much, much more, it's got, it got really complicated as this thing was starting, stopping, at any rate, they had started, then they stopped, so I had to look over two different revegetation plans in this instance, both of which accounted for the, the final, the, the required revegetation of the.
Six, six percent.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, after going round and round, we had managed to figure out exactly what was put in the ground, and what, what else needed to be put in the ground, thankfully, Rick came on board to help smooth this out, and we achieved what was necessary.
So essentially, we're just adopt, we're just approving the plan.
Again, another revegetation plan, it was a two-part plan, yeah, but there is one plan that shows both parts together.
Okay, and you're good with the final?
Yes, and I have a, a good array of, of, of different plants, shadbush, white, and scarlet oak, dogwoods, hollies, they runs the gamut, because it was done in two different, two different forms, in fact, so it is a nice plan at the end of the day.
Okay, very good, we motion to approve, Tom, but Tom, and second by Gloria, and all in favor, aye, opposed, extension, thanks for coming in, Claire, do you want to jump back to Sandy?
I guess there's people waiting here, they just want a, a hearing date set, I guess.
Set a hearing?
Right, and it's number sixteen, um, forty-five.
Sixteen, forty-five?
Forty-five, so.
Sorry for the wait.
Full education today.
There'll be a test after this.
I'm nosy, I like it, you might see me here more often.
You can watch it on, on the internet, too.
Did you step to the audio record?
Haley Gregor, thirty-seven Squire Town Road, Hampton Bay's.
Brian Gregor, same place.
This is a pre-submission application to set the conference, pre-submission conference date for September eleventh, I believe is the availability, but it's this, there's some elevations here.
Thank you.
This is a light industrial building, if I had.
Yeah, it's LI forty, it's, that's just north of the railroad station in Bridgehampton. The, this was actually before even February, but it was deemed incomplete, we were lacking building elevations, and since then, the owners have redesigned the footprint a little bit, or redesigned the building, and, and they have elevations as well, so we have everything we need, and the proposal's to demolish the existing truck and equipment repair shop, and replace it with a new metal building, about seventy, or a little less than seventy-four hundred square feet, to warehouse and store, I guess, your drilling equipment.
Well-drilled equipment.
And this is in the industrial park there, the little.
Yep, yep, right behind writing company.
Okay, yeah.
And the use, I believe, will be a special trade contractor, or, which is special exception use, the site's a little over a half acre, so it's a bit constrained, and the applicant's owner knows that they'll have to go before the ZBA to get some zoning relief, but I don't know if you want to present anything further, or is there, are there any questions?
You know what, when the property came up, the most important thing for us was interior storage for our equipment, and with the LI forty, you're allowed thirty percent coverage, we, we stayed in that, it's just with the size of equipment that I need, to be able to pull into the building, I need to shift the building, I've laid it out ten different ways, this gives me the best access to back a truck and trailer in, and while performing with size of building to property.
Keep all of this equipment in Bridgehampton, not have to haul it up and down the North Highway at eight o'clock in the morning, right?
Exactly.
You can take our train out in the morning and walk to your building.
That's the sales cut right there, you know, we, I live in Sagaponac, but most of our stuff's in Hampton Bay's, so I can get the Hampton Bay's easy in the morning, coming back down's a little bit.
That's so much.
So we were lucky to know who owned the property before us, and, and that's, you know.
Yeah, that's. So you're going to figure out your, like you were saying, it might be tight, you're going to have to figure out your internal circulation.
Well, that's what I've been doing, I've measured trucks, we, you know.
Turning radiuses and all that stuff, yeah.
There is a shared, you know, the entrance has to be through the shared basement, you know, that comes through, so that's why the building is on the side where it is, it can't be on the other side because of the.
Fortunately for us, we know everybody who owns on the road, I've went to them with the plans, I've gotten letters of support, you know, as you can see, it's no eye candy right now, so I think everybody's excited to see something change.
Yes.
That's a good spot, yeah, so our action then is to deem this complete? Oh, sorry.
Some sort of environmental stuff, are you thinking about solar, are you going to have heat, you're heating the system?
I'm doing, right now, we're, I propose, the color of the building is going to be, we don't know yet, the roof I've asked to do black, because we were thinking about doing solar panels on it, I do geothermal, so we're thinking about trying to do a little bit of geothermal for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm putting my two cents in on, let's make this a green building if you can, it's going to be beneficial for you, energy cost-wise.
You know, we, the trusses that I've asked for can hold the weight, so the building will be designed and built to handle solar panels, we're just going through all the, I guess, what we have to do, you know, the insulation, the windows, the.
Oh, this will be for scheduling.
A pre-submission.
Yeah, did you have a date?
We have a pencil in for September eleventh, that we said the date works, yeah.
So our action then is to deem the application complete, set pre-submission conference date for September eleventh.
Yeah.
Very good, there's a motion, motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, we'll see you on the eleventh, sorry about the wait.
Ah, that must have been a wrecked time.
And you'll work, you'll work on the interior, the, you know, parking and the interior circulation, because you know that's going to, it's always tough on a lot like this, yeah.
So, there's modelers going up.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
I just need to have one more set of those back.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Here you go.
Don't, don't let them get thrown out.
Do you want to jump back to twenty-five, twenty-five Sandy Hollow, we're going back to item seventeen, okay, we'll get these distributed for you.
It was, except then somebody grabbed me and wanted.
Oh, yeah, never, get out of there.
I can never leave. Okay, so, this, yeah, this is the property on Sandy Hollow that was a car repair place and is a landscape, going to be a landscaper, they followed everything with the pre-submission conference, and they also provided, and I've had it with me, but I put it downstairs, is the full environmental assessment on the property, so it said there was no recommendations for anything, but I did, in that packet, the last page is that, the conclusion letter, so you can see it for yourself. Want one more copy?
What was the name of that cottage complex years ago?
Next door?
I don't know either, yeah.
Oh, that's right, that's, I'm thinking, yeah.
We did the building back here, cycling this.
Right, the one that had the little accessory building or something?
Yeah, back here.
Yeah, the garage.
The old kit buildings from the Sears or Macy's kit houses.
So what's before you is a secret determination recommendation for a negative declaration, and to schedule a public hearing, because it is a special exception, yes.
Do you have a hearing date?
I have also September eleventh, that would be the third, that's the third, yeah.
So it's one, one resolution to adopt a negative declaration and set the, do we, it's completeness, and set hearing date for September eleventh, do we have a motion? Motion by Gloria, and David, you're on the second, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, five yes.
Here, thanks.
Anthony, did you want a, the Mr. As?
Eighteen, that's actually right.
Claire?
Do we have any other applicants here, other than?
Eighteen is off.
I was going to say. We got to wait, we got to wait for the traffic to build up a little more, Joe. Hill Street is still moving now, we have to.
Just, ninety-four Dune Road, that's the Dockers' application, just, I only put it on so to get authorization for the planning board to put out some requests for consultants to take us through the final environmental impact statement and finding statement, so I just wanted that authorization, and I'll come back with some proposals for the board's consideration.
So you need a motion?
Do you need a resolution?
We do, right, Claire, to authorize?
No, I think you just need direction, that's what I do, go hire somebody.
Go hire somebody, perfect.
Well, we're going to get some estimates, right?
Yes.
So what's going on?
Now I have, we have Joe here for the last.
Joe, for the soulful map? I have the Bannamans?
Yeah, let me, um, chock it up, Joe.
What about?
You got, you made.
Good afternoon.
You got all your materials with you.
Joseph Gassa, five Ogden Lane and Quag, very simple matter today, just unusual for me.
It never is with you, Joe.
I'm gonna try to keep it very simple. Um, uh, I'm involved with an old filed map near the dump in Southampton, known as Peconic Shores, and I have, uh, my daughter has the little, this green parcel, which is a topic for another day, to discuss whether that's a building lot or not. But I have been trying to purchase every other vacant lot on the map, Peconic Shores, for their development rights, so that I can bring them over. And I was successful in buying this little hundred by a hundred piece, shown in pink. And my application before you today is to abandon that portion of a paper street, half of it, next to the lot.
What's the road on the top of your map?
This is, uh, Great Hill Road.
Okay.
And this is the, this is the town landfill over here.
All right.
Okay.
On the map, so the, uh, little piece of street, it's half of a street, which would be twenty-five feet by a hundred feet. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it gives me another twenty-five hundred square feet of development rights.
Sure.
And as soon as I accumulate up to two hundred thousand, I'll be good to go.
And they're, they're Southampton rights, Joe, right?
Southampton rights, which are very difficult to obtain.
Yeah.
Work a lot.
So, uh, that's why I'm here, here before this afternoon.
I just clarify for the board, because this is a development section map that the board, you know, opened up. This portion or this road is shown not to be abandoned, that, uh, that, you know, uh, to be improved, but I think conditions have changed, uh, I know, because Wayne's paying attention, because he has a client. Um, I forgot which property, who's gonna wanna do the same thing, um, I just wanna make sure that nobody's access is, is being cut off.
Well, that, I was just gonna ask.
All we need to know, and.
Correct. So, on this, with the larger map, it shows my daughter's parcel, and this is the small piece, the hundred by a hundred, that I want to abandon, this little piece of street. And, uh, Mr. Bruin's client, Mr. Deegan, is the owner of this development parcel, and he takes access off of Albert Avenue. And the, the lot to the south, which is, uh, Da- DG, Mr. DG, that's his name, too. He takes access off of Albert Avenue.
Albert, yeah.
And as you can see, the, uh, the westerly portion of this street has already been abandoned. Okay? It used to serve another lot, it was in here. This, this lot over here, which is owned by Mr. Brody, but he sold it to the town for preservation. So there's no longer access needed for this lot, and, uh, of course, the, the west end was already abandoned.
Where is Dupree in there, is Dupree?
Dupree is, he's, he's down there. This is Mr. Dupree's house.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And he's coming off of Albert as well?
Comes off of Albert, and does a little.
Albert's open and, and heavily used, so, Anthony, did you see any, uh?
I didn't, I, I raised the question initially, because I, I, I only go to the old file map.
We always, yeah.
Yeah.
We always do.
Um, but I also spoke to Dave Wilcox about this, who sent him in this direction, um, I just wanted to make sure that no other lots, uh, needed this road.
Is it appropriate, this, Mr. DG, who is now gonna have title, I guess, to twenty-five feet of a road?
Yeah.
Um,
Well, he'd have to come in.
He's impacted in some way?
Does he automatically receive title?
No.
Say that again, that's.
The southern, once you bend to one side.
Have to abandon it?
You'd have to come in for the abandonment, right?
No, not.
Is this precluding him from doing something in some way, or?
Precluding.
No, he, he has access to the property, not from this street, from another street.
Yeah, but he could, he could have been.
It doesn't stop him from abandoning it either, if he wants to.
No, but I'm saying, he'd have to come in to abandon it.
Correct.
Yeah, that's all I was saying.
He doesn't, okay.
So three hundred dollar application fee now, to do a little abandonment, it used to be free.
Yeah.
We gotta make, you know, it, it helps our tax.
Gas used to be forty-five cents a gallon, let's go.
Um, this, Mr. Bruin who's here represents the, uh, Mr. Deegan, which is this parcel right here.
Correct.
And, uh, you might wanna comment on Mr. Deegan's?
Well, I think Mr. Deegan will want to do the same thing for the, you know, the, again, this half, the northern half, as you're suggesting.
Yeah.
Gentleman on the southerly half, the only issue, and Joe colored this green, is that parcel there is owned by the county, County of Suffolk, and they don't participate in any air abandonment. And so, that southerly half of the road could be abandoned on the portion that is adjacent on the west over here by this gentleman, but I think the southerly half would have to be, we can't get the county, so that southerly half up to the county parcel has to serve, remain there, unless the county.
It's gonna sit there, yeah.
Find in some abandonment at some point.
Yeah, otherwise, they'd be landlocked.
I was just, yeah, so the county property can be accessed from, from Albert, the left side?
Yeah.
And twenty-five.
Oh, just a trail, foot trail.
That other gentleman comes in and asks for abandonment, then nobody can get to the county land.
Can we get that for tax?
Oh, that's the next. Probably in the past, and then they probably. Oh, common truth.
To set.
Preserve, park preserve.
Or do they, is it for like water or some?
Well, when the county gets land now, and it's in the Aquavert Protection Overlay District, they don't sell it at auction anymore.
Oh.
Yeah, no, well, that's.
Keeping it all for preservation.
Yeah.
And that's what they're doing with this one.
Yeah.
And, uh, it happened with a couple pieces on this map, that I've been trying to buy all the lots to get the rights, and I find out that they either have no rights, because they've been lifted off, or the county has them and they're preserved.
Yeah.
It's, you can see on this map, all this green is already preserved land.
There's a lot of trails in there.
A lot of trails, a lot of preservation, a lot of small lots that have been taken for preservation.
Right. That's an odd tiny little lot there.
Did you submit a formal documents, application documents for approval?
Yes, I submitted by letter, uh, to the board, uh, I may pay the application fee, it went through Mr. Wilcox first, then it went through Mr. Trezor, and.
And out back, here you walk.
Before your board this afternoon.
So Anthony, how do we do, handle abandonment, do we just do, adopt a resolution, authorizing the abandonment?
Yeah, it would be an authorization, uh, authorizing the abandonment of a portion of Vincent Street, uh, for the tax map number nine hundred dash seventy-eight point one dash two dash nine, there's no street address.
And this doesn't, uh, uh, highway or town board has no involvement in this?
Nope, just the town, title board.
Good, all right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria. And I got Dave on the second.
You'll see our application. Uh, and we have, uh, five in favor, and, uh, two apps, bless you. And, uh, Thank you.
Joe hit the road, and quick.
Come on.
You're gonna be in traffic.
Pedal to the metal.
The next application is five hundred.
Thank you for the opportunity, you say, I know.
Yep, it was. Wayne, thanks for your help.
I shouldn't slide that. CBA referral.
Who's here? Claire's here, everyone's here. Do you want to, I guess we'll just jump back. Do you guys have another application, Dray's?
Dray's is off.
Dray's is off, item eighteen is off.
Yes.
We're not building any tents.
Do you have any walk-ons, or?
Yes, I have the Lewis Road walk-on.
You wanna do the walk-on?
Yes. You can do that.
Okay, what's the name of the walk-on?
Lewis Road.
Lewis Road Walk-On. Know that project well.
I wanna know better, I, Jessica's here.
Right.
Hi Jessica, continue invitation, if you wanna go up and see progress.
Yeah, it's been four or five months, that might make sense.
It's been a while.
Looks, it looks amazing.
So in short, I think, uh, Wayne is here to discuss the timing of the workforce housing. So, as you had, uh, considered and approved this subdivision and site plan, there was requirements, um, with the subdivision, in the form of a covenant, that the workforce housing was to be completed prior to the thirty-first CO being issued for the, the, uh, at market rate projects. And, um, that was also translated as a condition of the site plan approval. So, um, those, if that was going to be different, that have to be modified in the form of a modification of covenant and a modification to the site plan condition.
A plus-one vote from the board?
Yes, majority plus-one, or other covenants.
Yes.
The modification to the site plan condition would be.
But they're kind of.
They're normal. Yes, so, um, I, the request before you is to move that, um, because of the timing, workforce housing has not commenced, the building, though a building permit's been issued for it, it has not commenced, um, and so anything takes a year or so, and they would like their thirty-first COs sometime next year, right, next year?
Yeah, if, if you want us to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Provide some explanation, Wayne Bruin, on behalf of DLB Quag, uh, the applicants on the Lewis Road, as well as Jessica and Solaco, representative of, uh, Discovery. Um, we submitted a letter in June, and, and then again, uh, two letters, one, when Claire helped us clarify what exactly this request is, and what application fees were necessary. She gave us that guidance, and we provided that, uh, to the board yesterday, as far as the fees are concerned. Um, with respect to the request, uh, the condition, as Claire, uh, Claire had mentioned, was that we would not be able to get our thirty-first CO unless and until the twelve-unit, uh, workforce rental housing was actually constructed and completed. We obtained the building permit in May of twenty-four for that, however, since that time, uh, one of the things that, uh, Discovery realized is the need for additional workforce housing, in particular for some of its employees. So, uh, discussions have been held with various town officials, Janice, et cetera, about what other opportunities might there be to add additional workforce housing on the property. And to do so, may require modification, your board's review, Pine Barrens Health Department.
Side plan and?
Exactly. So, those discussions have been taking place, and there's a number of alternatives, as, as far as how it could be laid out, how many units, and also what the process may be. Um, the problem that we've now encountered is that, uh, to actually construct the current approved building would take about eighteen months, is on the average right now, take about eighteen months, and if we started today, um, we wouldn't be done for another eighteen months. The problem is, we have forty-plus building permits already issued, and units being constructed. Uh, we're about, we're ready for the first, uh, few COs, um, this fall, um, and probably be ready for our thirty-first CO, uh, next summer. And that will put us in a position where, you know, we're in this, uh, situation, we're not, we don't know how or where, we won't be able to go forward with the other COs, because even if we started today on the building, we wouldn't, uh, have time to do that. More importantly, though, is, is we think there's an opportunity for the town and our project to get additional workforce housing here. Um, we're not exactly sure how it is, but we want some opportunity, and ask the board to at least give us some opportunity to do that. In the discussions, we were, um, told that the best way to do this is to ask for an amendment and change that condition, uh, to a point where we would be allowed additional COs up to the number fifty-nine. That's what I think.
Out of, out of a total of how many, remind?
One hundred and eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen.
Okay.
So, half.
And we're not going away, as you know.
That gives you time to?
It'll, it, it, that'll give us time, like I said, we only have forty-some building permits at this point, um, and, and it's taking a little over a year, what is it, almost, again, twelve, uh, to fifteen months to construct the units.
Yeah.
Um, so, even if we started on the others, uh, to get to fifty-nine, we, it would give us en- enough time to do that, um, that work, um, and, and get, and, and so what we're looking for is just the opportunity to continue to explore, particularly with this board, what can we do, and what might be the process? There's a number of processes that could take place, um, and I don't wanna get into details, or, or if you want, we can talk about those, but I think the key is, is what we want is that further opportunity to work with you to find a way, if, if possible, to get more workforce housing. And if it's not successful, the, the worst-case scenario, in our opinion, would be that we're gonna construct the approved twelve-unit building.
I guess I have, I guess, I've commented a half, I certainly would want the twelve to be workforce housing, not for Discovery employees.
Oh, absolutely, we, we, part of our proposal would be that, that is a set aside.
The second half of that is build more.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you envision building it in that original structure, or maybe, or?
Jessica has been part of the discussions about various plans, and she can probably, uh, address that a little bit, but there's been alternatives, various alternatives, that include probably what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Um, Jessica and Solaco for Discovery.
You know, these mics are pretty good, you don't have to.
I don't need it, okay. So we looked at the existing footprint that, of the approved building, and it's kind of inefficient, um, the way it's laid out, and so, we contacted, um, our golf-related, um, architect, Tony Panza, I think you guys see Tony a lot. He has constructed different types of buildings that are more efficient, um, including some that are being built right now at West Hampton Country Club, and so, we can get essentially two buildings in the same footprint. Instead of something kind of big and boxy, it would be too narrower in pretty much the same footprint, and instead of tw- in that particular place, on that one workforce housing lot, we can get up to forty-eight beds instead of twenty. I mean, it's significant.
With, and if, define what you mean by efficiency.
I mean, uh, so, in, in the buildings that Tony's defi- designed, for example, they are a mix of different kind of types of, of rooms. So there's like traditional one-bedrooms with kitchens and baths, things like that, and then there's other ones that are more like your own room, your own bed with, um, in accommodation, but maybe you're sharing a kitchen, you know, with other people.
That's, that's generally.
That sort of thing.
For golf staff.
Right, so he's, does, he's laid out things like that.
So that would be for your Discovery employees?
That could be staff people.
Okay.
And then, we also have a couple of lots ri- right in East Quag that we haven't developed, they're two half-acre lots, right off of Old Country, they're literally, you could probably throw a rock and hit, uh, the school, so they're very conveniently located, they're, they're undeveloped, um, wooded lots right now, that we could construct on those. Uh, so we have kind of a mix of ways to get there, to get to the number, or maximize the number we can, um, you know, working with you, so it's really, we just would wanna, we needed the time to get the, to be able to get the runway to go shump, come and work with you and say, okay, here's our, here's the different options we have, and see what you guys think.
The two lots that you mentioned would require zoning change?
Nope. Nope, they're, they're regular lots next to regular houses in, in.
Single-family homes?
Single-family homes.
You would build so- single-family homes?
We could build those, yeah.
Or duplex, you could build a duplex.
Yeah, what, again, what you, you know what I mean, could we do like a, a, a nice house with a, a good-sized accessory apartment?
Maybe, yeah.
Things like that.
Like we did in Bridgehampton, in turnpike, so, yeah, that's exciting.
There's a number of alternatives, the, the, the key, though, is, is to do exactly what you said, Gloria, and is, is to provide more opportunity for workforce housing in some form.
Right.
And, and, and the only key here is, is this timing, if we were to, you know, to fulfill our obligations with the people that are already purchased and, and building units, we need to, um, at least get some time to explore this other option.
Right, so.
So, um, there's, so the covenant, um, says majority plus-one, as you say, it does not require a hearing, I would recommend a hearing in this case, um, of the monication, the modification.
Yeah, it's this, this whole project has just been too.
And I don't think that, you know, the hearing, open, hear what they have to say, closed, you consider it, they're still within their time period, you know, if you consider the fifty-nine.
What?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would, I would just add to the, this conversation is, is a couple things, one, is, um, in general, the sort of noise around this project is, is done, I mean, no one is, I, I mean, I'm not, you know, and I usually hear it from people. Um, so there's, there's very little discussion anymore, I think people have moved on, everything's built, the golf course is built, um, there's no construction noise behind Spiny Road Homes anymore, it's nothing. Uh, STP's built, I mean, it's, it's pretty well, you know, on its way. Um, and our neighbor to the, the neighboring property for this workforce housing lot. And our neighbor to the, the neighboring property for this workforce housing lot is East Quag Cemetery. So it's, you know, there's no, there's no proximate neighbors.
There will be no dead people here.
No one care, you know, there's no one near where, where this location is. So that's, that's the only thing I'd modify.
And the lot owners in the map all want their COs at some point, so they're not, there's nobody in the map that is going to object.
You, I mean, the public hearing, Claire, is that something you think is, is necessary?
I would recommend the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'll be an easy public hearing then. If there's no noise, there's no noise. At least we give the opportunity.
But that way, nobody can say we didn't.
No, no, I understand.
We're just up against a wall in terms of time.
Right.
Well, what's the time?
When can we set that?
Anyway, in terms of the golf housing, we don't have.
No, we're not presenting any, this is just for the.
No, it's just the extension.
Just the amendment.
Once you have a closer hearing, you, we could act at the next meeting.
Yeah, this September.
Do you have, can we set that today?
We could set it today if you'd like.
Want to do the eleven?
September eleventh. That would be the fourth. That would be the fourth.
So our resolution then is to, so we have a complete application for the covenant amendment.
How, yeah, how are we gonna phrase this?
Okay, ready? And so, so date, the planning board. No, you won't have me with the language. I'll be fine.
Right, got it.
So it's a mon, it's a planning board approved a site plan and subdivision on December eighth, twenty?
Twenty-two.
Yep. And a condition of approval was to require the workforce housing to be built and CO'd prior to the thirty-first. And the applicant has requested a modification of that to the fifty-ninth. And so it would be a hearing on both the site plan amendments and the modification of the covenant.
Okay.
Nothing about in order to increase workforce housing or anything like that. Nothing in there about the purpose.
Right.
It's just very simply says that, you know, workforce housing is required.
Give the fee and everything else, so we have a complete application.
Yes, we have the.
So you just need a resolution to set it for September eleventh, September eleventh. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, we have five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
Sorry about the wait.
No, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you seeing us.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, of course, and, and the doors always open. You guys wanna come and chat, because it is, it is really, you know, mature and beautiful. And I think you guys weren't there. I don't see why it was for being built when you came this time.
No, it was, it was just like those towers to get a sense of the.
Oh, Sandy Hollow.
So whenever you have some, any, I can take any two. Whatever you want.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You have, did you wanna go, go?
Yes, I just have the Nathan Topping Cook family.
Ocean Side?
Yeah, Ocean Side.
CBA referrals.
We're gonna do Anthony first and then I'll do that last.
Anthony, where are you taking us?
Number eleven is just the Nathan, Nathan Topping Cook family.
Oh, yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Nice. We have a public hearing coming up for landmarking. It's the Nathan Topping Cook family home. It's on Hay Ground Road in Bridgehampton. Have it up here. North on the railroad tracks there. I'm not sure if Dave sent everybody the landmarks report. I just took this today. So the landmarks board put together a nice forty-page report.
We usually get those. I don't remember saying it.
Yeah, I don't remember saying it.
Okay, I will send it to everybody. I thought Dave sent it.
Time to. This one's set for September. So if you want us to resend it to you and look at it before you do it, I mean, I think you'll support it.
Right.
But.
It's always good reading.
I mean, I can send it to you and then we could put it on next time.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think it was September, don't you?
Hold on, it is.
On Butter Lane or some.
Plenty of time.
On the way to Two Trees.
Oh, okay.
You can see on the top, top right, the cul-de-sac.
Oh, that's, oh, right, right, right.
Ah, there you go, there's.
There you go. We know that property.
I just hate that reference.
It all comes back now.
Okay.
Just real quick, I had the one walk-on. It was two-two-nine-seven Montauk LLC.
Okay.
We got, that's a Farrell office building in that cluster near, on the highway there, Bridgehampton. They're before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, that's.
Okay, so we're doing a report on them?
If that, if that was, that's clear, so this is, this is, sorry. And tell me again where it is.
Two-two-nine-seven Montauk LLC, two-two-nine-seven Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton. It's an office building with apartments.
Yes, in the back, on Church Lane.
On Church Lane.
Okay, got it, got it.
And so they're before the zoning board. The zoning board's coordinated secret, so our action is just to advise the ZBA. We'd like to be lead agency on this project.
Yes.
Very good. Do we do that by resolution?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, five yes. Now was the second walk-on.
I think we're good. Just the Ocean Side.
Are we doing a ZBA for Ocean Side?
Yeah.
What could they possibly be asking?
This is Joe Gaza.
Oh, no. He left?
And he left, we don't invite them.
Oh.
Invite.
He must have known it's on. I'm surprised.
I told him no.
Sidney, oh, you told him, you showed him the door?
Tell him there's another application fee.
More copies of that, but if you wanna pass it down.
Oh, this is okay.
Yeah, this was the development section that we had been wrestling with for a little bit.
I thought the town is, looking to buy it.
They were, and they can't buy it because there's no access.
There's no access?
Yeah.
Montauk Highway, doesn't back up the Montauk Highway, no? But I thought Joe had an access agreement.
Well, he's before the zoning board right now, next week, for, for lot subdivision for zero frontage and showing some type of easement.
Can't you secure that access at the ZBA and then sell it to the town?
No, that's not the issue. The issue is the access also gives the other guy the rights to go over it. And the CPF does not wanna have.
Oh, the CPF, oh, okay, yeah, you gotta.
Where is this?
I haven't.
We, we looked at this a long time ago.
Peters Lane.
Okay.
Yes, it was, yeah, he's gonna bring it up.
It's up here.
So it's the one with the wetlands, the flooding, and then the access being the issues. So the access proposed is, yeah, over that, yep, exactly.
Peters. What do they wanna do?
He wants for, Joe, Joe Gaza wants a development section opened with four lots. It would be a fifth part of the map, which is north of there. But he, so he gave it to the gentleman who owns the property with the access, but now will not have anything to do with each other because they hate each other now. So.
And didn't we have a public hearing on some variation? Because the neighbors in front showed up, right?
And they won't likely show up now for this action. But, you know, I just kind of outlined what my memory was, the issues on this, which is the action. It's, they considered the four parcels as part of the opening of the development section, although not formally decided issues with the opening of the development section are access is proposed over an easement thirty-foot wide over a residential parcel where access to subdivisions have direct frontage on a road, public or private, or fee titled land strips to a road, not including all, and then number two, the issue is not including all the lots. Five in total. Even, he even shows the five on this map, which he submitted to the ZBA, but in the application just discusses the four. So I'm, I'm very confused.
Now I'm remembering this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That they give. So I said that, that was an issue, because when you open a development section, you can only open the entire thing. You've got to consider that this other lot is there. You cannot ignore it. Whether it's ascending or receiving or whatever it's gonna be for, you can't ignore it. So that is a consideration. And then three is development proximity to wetlands, and four is development location within a flooding area. And then secret-wise, I'm leaning towards this being unlisted because it would be a type-two action if it was just an old file map, right? Because the map was already vetted. But because the access is separate, I think it triggers it into an unlisted action for secret purposes.
There's no, there's no access. If there's no access, what could he do with it?
It's, it's value is transfer of development.
Oh, it's the development rights again. Is this the same guy that was here? You mentioned this guy. Is that?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't know all the names of the characters.
Just so the board just remember, you're preparing comments to the ZBA, Joe's before the zoning board to try to get an easement, zero road frontage. Just so, so, so we, yes, we're saying that he has no road frontage. What can he do with it? Well, we'll see what the zoning board says after.
Is it they gave him, he might develop it.
Yeah, well, the zoning board's gonna make the decision if, if, if they're gonna allow the four lots to have an easement to provide access to them. That's what they're deciding. That's their only.
He's been through where?
This property, I believe, right here.
This, yeah, property.
He made a deal with the property owner.
He swapped.
Oh, and that property owner has to agree with it, though, right? They just can't.
A hundred percent. Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm very surprised, I'm very surprised that, that he wasn't a party to the application with the ZBA. Wouldn't have kept.
He might be. I don't know.
He's not. So, but, I mean, that's the ZBA's business.
Yeah, well, the ZBA's, he just has to ultimately provide the legal documents. I don't know that they have to be a party, so it has nothing to say.
Yeah. Anything else? I think I've just had the gist of it there, so I wanna send that to the ZBA.
Is it just, it's the two points that you've got?
Three points. Three, and I don't do that very clearly, so I'm going to probably bold it or something.
I see a one and a two. That's why I asked.
Three and four, is that the last sentence of that paragraph?
Oh, okay.
Four? Gotta bold it.
Okay. Oh, okay, gotcha. Yeah, that makes sense.
Joe's first application to the zoning board ever.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt the ZBA report?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, five yes.
Claire, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Bridgehampton Target.
They didn't submit, so it's on the agenda.
And what about West Hampton Activity Center?
Oh, it's the, that's the one.
Okay, is that, both, both of those big ones are at West Hampton?
They're both West Hampton.
Okay, thank you.
That's the last one.
Okay.
Then, then just real quick on the signatures. We have signed plans, everything that's on the agenda, plus I had Ashley Caparo.
Well, no, that is not correct. Because we don't have West, we don't have Bridgehampton.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So Bridgehampton Target.
Off the agenda. That's off the agenda.
Is off the agenda.
Yeah.
So I signed Shinnecock Fishing Dock, North Sea Park, and Ashley Caparo.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
And Ashley Caparo is a walk-on.
Ashley Caparo, which is a walk-on signature.
And I will, I will.
Kristen, did you pick that up?
She's good.
Yeah, did you pick that, we're doing signed plans.
We need a walk, walk-on Ashley Caparo, signed.
Yeah, you got that right.
And I will sign West Hampton Activity Center.
Okay, that's gonna be signed. We're, we're acknowledging that.